Okay. Hey, good afternoon, everybody. We've got a few things to touch on and some conflicts later on tonight. So let's try to get this going so we can be out of here right on time. And we'll start off the work session, turn it over to Dr. Crowe.
Yeah. Yeah, we want to make sure that we, Linda has, has to be out of here by six. And we, my daughter is rolling into town here at about half an hour. And so we've got things going on. So we're going to start off with budget overview first. Just wanted to open up the conversation tonight and let you know that after the, I guess it's the 27th work session, right? On the, no, no, it would have been the board meeting, I guess, the board meeting. Yeah, my dates are messed up. You know, we listened to the conversation and we didn't have year end numbers at that point in time. Ken and his team were still, you know, finishing up the year end budget. So we'll show you what that information looks like tonight. But, you know, we went back and, and I think Mary Martha was the one on the first vote that said, you know, we need more time to look at the budget, talk about this and decide, you know, where we want to be related to revenue neutral. And so Kent will go through some of that information with you tonight. We listened to you, we heard you. The vice president had some significant conversation about, you know, maybe some things that, that we can do a little bit differently. And so I think, you know, we'll be open to the conversation tonight. But appreciated the vote, you know, at the meeting the other night to give us more time. Because I think it was helpful to, to be able to dig a little bit deeper and look at some things. And so I'll turn it over to Kent, okay?
Yep.
You all have a packet of information in front of you. I also sent out a PDF of this information about 20 minutes ago. So you'll have it as a PDF also. And then after the decision, we'll make sure it gets posted on the public page. So let me see if I can log in. Sorry about that, you're going to need to send me that login information.
How about, how would it, would it be, can you just email it to Heather since she's already logged in? And she can present for you?
It shouldn't take that long. Now, we can start, I'll just, the first document says legal budget notice of public hearing, notice of revenue hearing, notice of revenue neutral hearing. If you turn, there's just one page that goes with that document. And so the main thing that you'll see here, Dr. Crowe sort of gave a hint of this. Our VP meeting, we, we did decide that we were going to present a recommendation to you that keeps the amount of taxes flat from what we levied last year. So in another way of saying that is, you know, based on the estimated valuations that we have, we don't plan to exceed the revenue neutral rate in this recommendation. And it came with, you know, a great deal of thought. Our year end information, numbers did come in a little better than planned. You know, we had given you information on June 27th. That it came in higher than that. It has some risks, in my opinion, because if we're in a time of inflation, and we talked a lot about this last time, for in a time of inflation and our mill levy, excuse me, our, our taxes to be levied don't go up, our state aid, if it stays the same and we're only able to get minimal increases on tuition and P revenue, it kind of makes us in a situation like a retiree, I'm on a fixed income in a time of inflation, trying to keep up. That's the best analogy I have. But as Dr. Crowe said, we felt that there are things we can look at in our budget. The unspent budget was very high this year. We think some of that's still a carryover from COVID. But, and that's probably enough explanation. I just wanted to kind of go through some of the thoughts that I had at least from our discussion when we did decide to change our recommendation. And again, we do thank you all for passing that, giving us more time to look at it. And actually, I think it would be a good thing to actually vote to exceed the revenue neutral rate just to protect that amount of tax dollars in case there would be a slight change in evaluation. So I don't know that I need to go through a lot on this. Well, actually, I should. Let me see if I've got this here, so I think I can share my screen now. I shared the wrong thing. Should come up here in a minute. Says I'm sharing, there it is. So this is the notice that we will ask you to approve at the August board meeting. And if you read up at the top, it says it's a, you know, the notice of public hearing, which is what we normally have, but it also is a notice of the revenue neutral rate hearing. So since we did pass the intent, we really should have the revenue neutral rate hearing, in my opinion. You probably don't have to. Then this, this document will be published in this regard. Down here in the corner, you can see that based on the valuation that I've shown here, the 938 million, keeping the taxes the same. See taxes levied, 12,928, last year, same amount for this year. Comes to a, a estimated mill levy rate of 13.774 down here at the bottom of that column. And then the revenue neutral rate is the amount we got from the college, or from the county. I will say this on the valuation here, this 938 million. I was just talking with the county clerk's office today. And they said I really should reduce that by about 2.7 million for the TIF, it's a tax increment financing. I mean, it makes the difference of about four one hundredths of a mill on the mill levy. So that's really not much of anything. But clearly, you know, you can't just take the valuation that they give you. You have to subtract off this TIF.
And it's tax increase, what?
Tax increment financing.
It's actually on the Orshlin project. But I just saw last week that the city was considering Orshlin to selling across the country. And they're going to pay that TIF off. So the TIF may not be in effect by the time this happens.
Yeah, so I think what
They wouldn't know that if it counted yet.
Hey, well, we do make this notice so that the taxes levied is the same as the tax last year. Then what happens to the valuation because the tip won't matter? So
So you're saying to go with the 13.774?
To go with the tax?
Yeah, if you go down to the bottom of the column that says amount of 21 taxes, and that should say 23, there was a mistake on the form I got from the state. And I didn't change that. But the last, the next to the last column to the right, which shows the taxes to be levied, 12,928, 138, as long as that's the number that we have there, then they will adjust
The mill levy.
To equal that amount.
Okay.
As long as it doesn't exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Right.
If you don't pass the, to go above the revenue neutral rate. So that's confusing. But that's the number I think we need to hone in on is the taxes to be levied. Sorry, Kim.
No, I was just going to say, that would be the number that, that we'll, you know, send to the county. But what Kent is saying, when we have our revenue neutral hearing in September, September 13th, at that hearing, it's probably important for you to say that you're going to exceed the revenue neutral rate in case that number changes a little bit. But these are the, this is the tax amount that we're going to levy. This is what will be requested. This amount, the mill levy gets adjusted then based on the valuation and what happens with TIF and some of those kinds of things after the fact. And you don't get that, we don't get the certified mill levy until November. So, but the taxes, the taxes are not going to change. What you're going to levy is these taxes here.
With the value increases, very low likelihood that it missed that one.
It's not going to change, probably.
And anyway, it does, historically, it hasn't changed our levy, but like tenths of a mill at the most.
But it protects you just a little bit. So, but I think the important message is, you know, you're, you're asking the same amount of taxes that you asked for last year, we're not going up. According to this. What's that? You, you will have to make a decision next year on your budget and the following year. It doesn't hold, it doesn't hold. Yes, it does.
Yeah, it lowered the forecast that we showed you for
That's what he's going to go through.
I have the updated one for this year. I don't have a, I didn't prepare a projection for '24 for this presentation. So if it's okay, move on to the next set of documents, which says FY '22 operating budget update and FY '23 budget recommendation. Scroll up down here, get that up on the screen. Starts with a page of notes. And at the top, you see the credit hours that we're using for next year's estimate is basically the same as the credit hours we ended up with this year. Just a few, excuse me, increased hours on international rate. And you may recall that we did lower the tuition rate for international students. And at that time, we're hoping that it'll increase. So the valuation, these are the numbers that I had at this time. Shows again, the, down there in the tack, total taxes to be levied, the same as last year. Just a note on the beginning balance. We, we transferred $3 million this year over within the general fund but to a strategic innovation designated fund. And I've been showing that as a reduction to the beginning balance. It really needs to show as a expenditure. So I just need to put that note in there.
Where are you now?
Well, I'm on note, just below the tax. It should be note three, but I forgot to.
It said it was FT 2022 beginning balance.
Yeah, and I should say, we, you know, thank goodness for Kerry Potter, our director of accounting over here, worked all weekend on this. And we were still reconciling some numbers today. So you're going to see a typo in here, maybe something that's just a little bit off. But I don't think it's anything significant or that will change anything in any meaningful way between now and when we finalize this and present it to you at the August board meeting. And down on note four, there's one of those typos there. On the health insurance increase, you can see it for '22, I have zero. But for '23, I have 5%. That should also be zero. Back in March, we thought it was going to be 5%. And I just carried this over, copied it and didn't mark that. But that should be zero.
On which one?
It's the very, yeah, '23.
2023.
Health insurance increase.
And why is it zero?
Well, we are
Because we kept, we did self-insured and
And yeah, and we've had pretty good results. So that's what, what they think's going to happen at this point in time. And that's what we budget for, zero amount increase.
And that's what we negotiated with the, with the employees as well. There wouldn't be any increase there.
So I'll go ahead and move on here. This next page, the top box here, this is, what this is, is the current, the year that just ended, FY '22. And it's a comparison in the right hand column of what we showed you back in March with that update. So it's just part of, this is for the, us in the accounting area. So we keep track every time we show you an update. We want to know what that difference is so we can track it, make sure we have everything from time to time. But you can see that, you know, it's, this is again, a little misleading. In that line three, I had to adjust this transfer over to the strategic innovation fund. So that really increased our budget amount there and decreased our beginning balance. So when you come down, you can see that we underspent our budget by about $4 million. That's very significant. And again, we're, we're doubtful that, that's, will be that way forever. I think there have been circumstances over the last two years that have helped us to underspend our budget. So we'll keep track of that. We're not going to budget for quite that much next year.
We, we know that part of that is unfilled positions that have been open for a significant period of time within our current budget. And we want to be able to go through and assess which of those positions we're still trying to fill and which of them are positions that have been open for a long period of time that we know that we aren't going to fill for whatever reason. But a portion of that additional unspent budget, we know, is due to, to unfilled positions that have just, that have been, you know, been there for whatever reason for a significant period of time. I, I think, and I also, sorry, Kent, to butt in again. But I think this is also indicative of the, the folks that are managing the budget and their conservative perspective on how they take care of the dollars and that they aren't out just spending money on things that are unnecessary. So I think there's a lot of credit when we see this unspent, when we see these unspent dollars in our budget, that's a credit to the people that are managing their budgets, paying close attention to them.
So on line seven, there are revenues over and expenditures. It shows that 2.428 million deficit. But actually, because of this $3 million transfer, that should be about 570,000 in the black that we had revenues actually over expended in the, these funds that we call the operating budget. And we will end up the year exceeding our 10 and a half percent goal by $4.2 million. So again, that's another thing that we looked at in making this recommendation that we're making today, that we believe even if we have some deficit budgets this year and possibly another year, we have some balance to help us make it through that. I just could say sustainability is another issue.
One of the things that we talked about as VPs again was the percent of the expenditure budget that we hold in reserve, that we have to hold in reserve. And one of the things that we want to visit with you about is looking at that again and potentially increasing that. Because when this 10% of the expenditure budget was sent, set, it was a number of years ago. I'm not even sure. I mean, it's been a long time ago.
Well, we said it, we said it like 15%, probably 25 years ago. And then it's changed some more time.
But that 10 and a half percent of expenditures doesn't cover as much as it used to years ago. And so we want to go back and look at that. This gives us about
We're showing like two months, two months of salary.
Salary coverage is all.
Not enough.
And it's not enough. There's, there's a need to have more set aside. And in comparison to the other community colleges and the cash reserves that we have, we're, we're about in the middle or just below the middle. There's some that have months and months and months ahead of us in cash reserve. And so we want to know with you, we want to visit with you about increasing that amount so that we have a little bit more buffer if we would need it.
I have a question for you or Kent. Do you know, do we know exactly what the statute is? Is it still not changed as far as what our reserve has to be? There isn't a statute that requires us to have a certain reserve.
That's correct.
The board said that years ago.
It's the board, the board says it. There's not, and it's 10 and a half percent now?
Yes.
That's what it's been for a number of years. Kent said it probably was set
Years ago.
15 years ago.
And you don't want that? Do you want more or less?
It's a complicated discussion. I think we should, you know, there's a lot of factors. I think we need to factor in all our reserves. I've, I've been comfortable with the 10 and a half percent because we've had a lot of these designated reserves for some time. If those start to erode, then we may want to, we may want to anyway. But that's one reason that we may seriously want to look at this. And so I think the whole issue of these designated funds and designated reserves that the college has in our budget structure, I think first of all, it makes it difficult for some people to really understand our budget. And I just think it's a topic that we need to address in some depth here over the next few months.
Do you know what it totals?
Yes.
You add the designated reserves to what we have officially, what is that total, what percent?
Well, we'll get to that in the next document.
Do you know what percent?
No.
Around how much?
It also depends on what you look at as our budget. Because this is the operating budget, but we also have budget for other things like the dorms. If we say we have a budget for these designated accounts, then it's going to change that significantly. So it's not a simple question. I think it really needs to be looked at in a total. So going down in the next box, this is the FY '23 budget. That's the fiscal year that we're currently in. We've been in for about 25 days now. And you will be approving the budget for the current year at the September board meeting. You'll be asked to approve the notice of public hearing at the August regular meeting. And you can see that we are actually budgeting for a deficit next year. If you look at the anticipated unspent budget, we've got about 4% in there, 2.2 million, which is higher than we have budgeted in the past. But it's lower than the actual unspent budget for the last couple of years. Especially, well, especially the last couple of years when we've gotten some of this federal stimulus money. So I don't have a lot more to say about that. On the next two pages, if you want to take a look at that, you can see, you know, some of the changes that were made between the March update and the June update. I didn't include a comparison of last year's revenues. So I could probably do that for the August meeting. We usually do that. But the main things are the 3.4 million increase in state aid. And that's really about it. I mean, the tuition revenues are going to stay fairly similar to what they were last year. And the local taxes will stay very much similar to what they were last year in this recommendation. So unless you have questions, we'd probably skip on down to page five. It says OB five in your booklet. I've got it pulled up on the screen here. And this is a summary of our expenditure budget going back to the FY '22 budget that was, you know, in place for the year that just ended. And you can see there were a number of differences there. But if you scroll on down to line 17, it says FY '23 changes. So we've showed you this list before. But this, this includes the additions that we're making from '22 to '23. And again, when I do this in August, I'll try to summarize this a little better. But like salaries, it shows 3% on line 23. That's what we were estimating back in March. And then down on line 40, it's got the other 2%. So that does add up to the 5% salary increase. If you look here on line 25, it shows 220,000 in health insurance. And then down on line 39, this is where I've reversed that. So we're not really adding anything for health insurance. And again, I'll try to make this a little clearer when we bring it to you in August. But there are lines from 19 down to 34 or 37. You can see, again, summary, we're adding a few positions. We're adding some money to the marketing budget. We've talked to the board about that in the past. So I just point out where it is. If you have any questions about it, would like any further information.
Question? I'd like to go back to page four. Under 18 motor vehicle tax. I saw in previous years, we always have an adjustment there, negative adjustment. Why is that? You would think that there would be more cars being registered in that much.
Yeah, I don't know. You know, I apparently overestimated it last year. But I think it was based on what we had been getting. And I was, I was surprised that it didn't come in any higher than that.
Thank you.
Kent, it's the, I forget what we're calling it, but the COVID money is transferring into the employee bonus.
Her funds.
Oh, the special recognition.
Yeah, the recognition award. Does that, is that showing up on OB five or is that separate? Because it's kind of designated.
Yeah, we're taking out of a designated, but it does show up over in the supplemental information.
On page five.
No.
On the supplemental.
Yeah, I'm not sure where it's at the supplemental. But if it's okay, I'll go ahead and scroll on down to supplemental. A lot of good information here. I'll tell you what I'm going to do. We'll start by going back to page 27.
Whoa. You're like me, you go to the back of the first.
Yeah, we probably should put this up front. I think as we redo this for the August presentation, we might do that. Actually, 27 shows the cash that we have on hand. Yeah, it's page 30 is the one I know.
27, it looks like to me, it's got the three years worth of, or the, it's got the unaudit expenditures and the differences in the operating budget.
Now, it's 31 is the one I really want to look at. Because this shows our fund balances of all the, the cash basis funds. So if you, if you say, what is the overall cash, unencumbered cash of the college? At the end of June, it was 30,901. And so if you look up in that And so if you look up in that, the operating budget up at the top, $10,119,357, that's the amount that will show up over in that section that's labeled operating budget. Then we have the student life funds, which is our residence hall, and the student union has about 4.6. Restricted funds, and for the most part, those will zero out. So that's usually not money that we can count on using. Same thing with the agency funds. That's money really that we're holding for student organizations or like the Grisley backers, not for our use. But even when you take those two out, everything else is really a part of our cash basis. Program development funds, and we've, we've talked about that. And there's a sheet in the supplemental for that. Strategic initiative, designated fund, facilities fund, deferred maintenance fund, capital projects fund, technology fund, interest deductible, capital outlay fund. That's from the mill levy, the 1.33 balance. And then we have all these designated funds, this 2.2 million. There, there's like two pages of those, none of them are over. I think the biggest one's a couple of hundred thousand dollars. But this is, a lot of this is general fund money. We just don't show it in the operating budget because we've structured that operating budget to give us a gauge against the 10.5. And again, that's something that I'm hopeful we can have some conversation about to make sure people really understand how that works in the future. So if you were going to, I think, go back to Julie's question, what would this be as a percentage? Well, if you took it as a percent of the operating budget, it'd be about 60%, but it's not all for the operating budget. So just kind of going back.
Kent, one quick question off the side track, but on the deferred maintenance. I know it was a month or two ago, we had a list of sort of the wish list of deferred maintenance projects and how they were internally ranked. Is there a plan at some point to put a proposal in front of us to use some of these deferred maintenance funds to start knocking off some of those projects?
That's an excellent question.
Yeah, well, you, I mean, you voted on the first, you know, the first batch that was part of the bundled batch, but that's one of the things on page 21A is the, 21A starting A and B. These are the lists and the tables that have been put in front of you before that facilities folks prioritize the deferred maintenance things, and you can see them out over a period of years. And so we'll, we'll bring that back to you with, yeah, that. And it's, you know, those are projects that need to be addressed.
You know what would be really wonderful is if we had all of that on some kind of spreadsheet, all of the items listed, the whole, all deferred maintenance items. And every time they actually got something done, check it off so that we can see the, so that we can see that, yeah, so that we can see the progress.
Did you look at page 21?
Well, not just, and B, list them all right here. So we can, we can, we can put that, we can put that in one table if we needed to.
That would be nice. And just to know what's, I guess, been completed.
These are things.
Yeah, 23 is not done yet, 24.
None of these are.
Okay.
None of these are yet. The ones that are being worked on right now are the ones that you approved December or last fall.
Yeah, we can, we need you to update on that too.
That'd be, that'd be great. I was just trying to figure out how we got such a mess with the deferred maintenance, but.
I don't think we're a mess, that's not a fair statement.
No, we have 60-year-old buildings.
Let me try to word it. How did it become so large, the deferred maintenance pot and the deferred maintenance projects that we have to use? You know, we're, we're going to use all that HERF money, and we're still not going to be caught up for the next several years, actually.
Part of business, let me tell you.
Well, you know, I think it's, I think in comparison, if you would, I don't know the number right off the top, but the universities have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollar, in dollars of deferred maintenance on their campuses, and they receive a significant, they receive 80% of the higher ed budget every single year. And if they're not able to address their deferred maintenance issues, then, you know, we're.
Here's my deferred maintenance issue right here that I'm now addressing.
But it's, it takes a lot of money. And if you're going to do these, you either have to accumulate the money over time, try to, or you go out for, you go out for bonds to try and address it. So we're, you know, I, this is actually a huge benefit that we're able to put this together and start to address some of these issues. They, they haven't been, they haven't been ignored. It's not to the, it's not to the fault of anybody here. It's just that we haven't had the money, funding flexibility.
How would you say it's accumulated decisions over the past 20, 30 years? So a lot of what's in this book, pardon this, in this document is an explanation of the, some of the deferred or the designated funds that we've been talking about. So I'd like to just highlight a few of them.
Page 20, what, four?
Well, I need to go back to like page. Start on page five and six. These are what we just call general designated accounts. And you can see there's two pages of them. And these are reserve fund balances that allow people to carry over money. It doesn't get lost in their operating budget from year to year for specific projects or from specific revenue sources that would be used for a specific expenditure. And so.
Which, which picture are you on again?
I'm on page, sorry about that.
Okay, so five, okay.
Yeah, so five.
My bad.
And oh, six is just the continuation. There's actually two pages of these. Well, the second page is actually those in the, the technical area. So you can look at those. I don't know that we want to spend a lot of time here. I know we, we have a little bit of ground to cover, and we wanted to get a little demo on the BKD product. So moving on down. Oh, seven is a summary of our campus life programs, residence hall, and student union, and food service. You see, it's maintaining a healthy balance, about $4 million. This, as we've talked about in the past, this is the reserve we would have if we ever needed to catch up any deferred maintenance or if we ever thought about replacing a dormitory. That's one of the reasons we feel it's needs to carry a fairly healthy fund balance. And next several pages are just detail of those individual funds. There's four funds within that system of funds. On line, on page 13, S13. This is a cash basis summary of, of the HERF indirect funds. And when, what we use to term indirect in relationship to the HERF, the designated funds, is we received considerable money from the grant that was taken directly to the general fund. In other words, some money we received from the grant was spent on PPE and HVAC equipment, things like that, that the grant just funded, and we took it right and bought those things. But there was also, we were able to claim lost revenue, and that money just came back into the general funds. We wanted to segregate that from the operating funds. And so we put it over here in this HERF indirect designated account. That account, at the end of the fiscal year, had $464,000 in it. We anticipate getting another about 1.7% for lost revenue that we haven't claimed yet. We can still claim. And then you can see how we plan to pay for the BKD tools out of that. I hope that's close to the right amount. I know it's, we had it listed higher at one point. And service regulations, the $800,000, this is where that'll be paid from. And they're going to be going out when, soon? Last week of August. And then we also took $500,000 of this directly to the self-funded health insurance reserve. We'd already put a million in from another reserve. So a million five overall will be put in as seed money going forward.
Hopefully that'll be enough for next year and the year after that, right?
The indications are that we did well enough that should be good at least for the next year.
Good. Wonderful.
I'm going to skip over the ADE fund and the adult supplemental fund unless you have questions on that.
Those are all federal dollars. And they don't spend any more than they take it, they can't. So we're, we're kind of a pass through for those.
Yeah, there is a, the general fund has always contributed a certain amount.
A little bit, yep, I guess you're right.
Yeah. And then the adult sub fund, that's our non-credit. It should, it's budgeted just to be breakeven. Down on page S16, this is the academic program development fund. And you can see it has a balance of $329,000 at the end of the year. I didn't get it copied in, so I will get that for you. We have a spending plan. Oh, wait a minute.
Academic development fund, what page is that on?
Oh, yeah, I went in, copied it in here. There's a gap between line seven and eight. That's because I put those in at the last minute. But that's basically the spending plan that Dr. Neville has given us at this point in time. I'm sure it's going to evolve at some point. You stop me if you have questions. The capital project fund right now, this is on the next page. That's money that's just left over from the 5,000 building. We have about, we borrowed 7 million, then we put in about 7 million out of a designated account for that project, and we didn't use all that designated, so this carries over.
What strengths are attached to this?
None. None.
None, but you know, part of that project that isn't happening yet, but probably will happen in the future, is the building of Yorktown Road that, that will connect from Douglas, is it at Douglas or Central now that will go to 13th? And, and you know, the commitment that was made is that the, the city would pay for part of it, the college would pay for part of it, and it would be, you know, paid for over a significant period, 20 years, I think is what, what the agreement was. But so this funding could be used for part of that. And so it makes sense to, you know, to hang on to that. The Andover, Steve Vander got, Andover got some base funding, some of the Spark funding from the state level, and part of Yorktown development is, is part of that funding. But they're still trying to work with the other property owner on the east side to figure out, you know, where that, where that road's going to be. But it's going to, it's going to follow right along the east side of our campus. And so, you know, it makes sense to kind of hang on to this and wait because we'll have to pay for part of that road development.
Okay, the next page is the capital outlay fund. This is the residual from the capital outlay mill levy that sunset last year. And at the end of the fiscal year, we had $1,331,000 still in that fund. There are no, well, the restrictions on this money, because it is in the capital outlay fund, is simply that it has to be spent on expenditures with, that are, you know, capital in nature. The statute says it has to be equipment, facilities. It could be technical equipment, but basically, building or equipment can be deferred maintenance. The facilities fund, and then we talked about this a little bit on the 27th. This is kind of in between. These are more projects that are not within the operating budget, but they're not really capital projects like carpet replacement, parking lots, the renovation. Sometimes there'll be a roof project, something like that. And actually, a roof project would probably be beyond this. The biggest thing they've got listed there is $325,000 for parking lot repair. You know, it's smaller HVAC equipment, like say, annual painting and carpet replacement. So I'm going down to the technology fund on the next page. And you can see that we ended the year with $1.8 million there. Now, on the next two pages, no, the next page, I think I got it on one page, is the technology plan, which Bill has provided for us. And you can see it's a long-range plan that totals almost $5 million. So even though he's got 1.8 in there, he says he needs more. So it's kind of tickling his ribs here a little bit.
You showed them this previously.
Yeah.
Yeah, so shouldn't be any surprises there. And the deferred maintenance, this mostly comes from the HERF funds. And you know, we have the five, almost 5 million that shows in the cash balance. We do have about 2.6, 2.7 million left to pay on the Simpson projects. So we do, you know, some of that will get spent down. Should still have about a million unencumbered amount there that we can look at as we look at the reserves that are carried over. And then the list of deferred maintenance projects follows that. Can see that the first year Ireland thought what was reasonable and doable because just, we don't only have to have the money, but we have to have the manpower to oversee these projects. And so he's giving you a list of that, almost $800,000 for the projects that we'd like to see put out to bid next year or, or accomplish next year. I think we're getting close to the end. Yeah, there's, you know, some information on scholarships. I don't know if I need to go through that. A lot of that we keep for our internal purposes in accounting. Restricted funds over on page 25, again, these are funds that really can't be, shouldn't be used for anything other than the the purpose in the, we actually, some of them we actually spend before we get to reimbursement. That's why you see a few negative numbers there. And at the end of the fiscal year, we had $968,000 still in the, the self-funded insurance. The self funded insurance. Going to meet with. People from I M A later, or we met with them and Kerry's going to get with one of their representatives, make sure we're reconciling to what their projections are for the self funded. Agency accounts, again, this is just where we hold money for organizations. And million page. 27. This is a reconciliation we do between the operating budget and the legal budget. Partly because on the the notice of public hearing. There's a mountain listed, that is the unaudited F Y 22. Actual expenditures. And it should come down to 68,734. And then what it shows that we're asking for. For next year's legal budget is 85 million, so. That that creates a question sometimes, comments from the public, why are we, why is, what's this big gap? And part of it is. Because. We have different funds in there. And designated funds that we. Budgeting legal budget to spend it, just in case we would choose to do that. Plus, we do increase the. The general fund operating budget, just to make sure that we're covered in case we would need to spend some reserves. And the main reason to do that is there's a statute that says if you would overspend the legal budget. The. A K board can actually take money away from us. So we wouldn't do that unless, obviously, there was some kind of contingency, so this allows. Contingency and we don't have to keep track of it quite as close throughout the year, but. Really, for the board, the administration. Is pledged to use the operating budget amount. That's why we put such an emphasis on the operating budget. So I think that's all, you know, that's a real quick version of. Butler's finances to date.
Only one question I had from last week was the, how many of the three, three and fall credit hours are expected in that?
Forgot to check on that.
I'm just curious.
For this.
For this year, we just completed, we had six in summer, three.
We'll have to go back and look, I forgot, I forgot about that, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to see what kind of benefit that was or how it was reflected in.
I mean, there did help some.
Yeah.
Well, we talked in executive session a little bit about it. I don't know that we were going to give you any other additional information, I don't remember that. We kind of talked just initially about the fact that. He laughed.
Let's be careful here.
I didn't know that we needed to give you any other update beyond the question that you asked. Initially. I wasn't aware. I don't know that we were going to talk about personnel.
Why don't you outline what you think, what's still outstanding, we could look at it for the August.
So I might just close it. Was your presentation part by kind of going back to what I said at the beginning, at the August. Regular board meeting, we ask you to approve this notice of public hearing that we presented to you. And then it will set the dates and the times, it'll limit the expenditures and it will. Limit the amount of taxes to be levied. Once that you vote on the notice of public hearing.
I recommend that Dr. Cole and the executive staff for taking the initiative. And bringing us the net revenue budget. I think that giving you more time allowed us to see. You know, the budget that we're getting now and also to understand that. The people that are responsible to manage that budget are the ones that helped us. Make that determination, and I think that's so much better than us saying we want to see this or that or whatever when we don't know. So anyway, I just say, good job.
Yes, very good, thank you. It's a pretty significant conversation in V P's and I know even beyond that, but. I think Kent's and I appreciate, we appreciate that, we appreciate you understanding that and knowing that. That we've worked hard on that, I think the other thing, you know, Kent's cautionary note at the very beginning, we're using, we're using one time funds. To help us this next year, but it can't be an ongoing kind of thing. Because those reserves will deplete and then we won't have them as we need them, so. You will, you will hear potentially a different conversation next year at budget time, but we'll, I mean, again, we'll do a really, really strong look at it and. Try and bring you the best we can. I I think it's also incumbent on us and and for you guys also to understand that we bring you those budgets. Sometimes without knowing the final numbers, that's why we give you updates along the way, so you can see how things are changing. And it's always helpful. Then when we have the final numbers and we know what those are, you know, for sure, so Kent and his team have done a great job of reconciling all of that for us.
You have a history of some of the tax amounts of taxes.
Well, I have a history, but when I'm looking at that sheet that had.
Oh, you want to see a projection?
Yes.
Yes, I would be happy to do that. I can do that pretty quickly, actually.
So if the recommendation is changing to keep the taxes the same, do we have to have the public hearing? I know you were talking about that you should, just in case of whatever, but do we absolutely have to?
Yeah, the the revenue neutral, the the notice, the public hearing you have to have. There's a second hearing, that's a revenue neutral rate hearing. Which. I recommend that you have that, you don't. Have to have it. All I would do is protect that sort of marginal amount of taxation that could be. Lost with evaluation decrease.
No.
When you say valuation decrease, do you mean a decrease from what they're estimating or do you mean a decrease overall? I mean, we're not going to see a decrease overall because of inflation, but or valuation increases, are you talking about?
Yeah, yes, that's what I'm talking about, they give us an estimated valuation, that's what this is based on. It's possible that that valuation can change up or down. Between now and November. If it goes down. They would raise the mill levy slightly, like it like it said, that. 2.7 in that TIF changed the mill levy by four one hundredths of a mil. So that's a likely amount. So to the short answer to your question, Kim, is you do not have to have the revenue neutral rate hearing. But if you want to pass the revenue neutral rate. Pass. A motion to exceed the revenue neutral rate in order to protect the amount of taxes levied, you would have to hold the hearing.
They're scheduled the same time, you know, one before the other, so it's not a separate, it's not a separate meeting or anything like that, they're both on the 12th, right?
12th.
13th, sorry, 13th. And I would. County does.
County.
The county is going to send that out based on our earlier recommendation, so you're you'll probably get people. We are going to get notices that we are going to raise taxes. That will that will go out that way.
Here's what I would recommend, I'm going to advocate for Kent and and the process that's been put in place and the recommendation that he's getting. From his colleagues and from. You know, the county, the county folks and stuff, this is the first time this has ever been done, so people are kind of working their way through this and stepping their way through it. And I think based on his experience, years of experience and working with the changes in the taxes and the mill levy and what comes to us after it's been certified in November. That it makes sense to follow through that step. You know, we're going to ask, you're going to set the amount of taxes that are levied. But I think that we need to listen to his recommendation that we do both of those hearings just to protect ourselves.
Well, the letter coming from the county will list every entity. Who who voted again or to up it or stay with, correct? So there's going to be 13, 14, 15.
It'll be everybody in Butler County.
Right, I mean, there's going to be a lengthy list.
I guess.
Nine school districts.
This is the first year that they've.
County townships.
It is.
This is the first year that they provide. So.
So it's not going to be tailored by your address where you're only seeing the taxing.
Yeah, it will be.
It will be. Boy, that's going to be.
This was where I was trying to head off at the past last time, we would have not voted for that, they would have known we weren't, had no intention of it. And I get irritated by a letter in the mail along with everybody else. Now I've got to explain to whoever's irritated, like. Who you're dead, we're not going to.
I think you have a good story to tell now.
Would have been better story to tell, but yeah.
Well, I'm not aware.
People would have noticed that we were not on the list. It wouldn't show our name with the zero balance, we just wouldn't have been on the list. I know.
All of the other of the taxing entities that I have spoken to, everybody voted to exceed the revenue neutral, some of them have already.
Barton did not, Barton gave an 8% raise and no, no interest.
Barton.
That's that's a.
Oh, Barton Community College.
Positive spin news for their community.
Well, the mill levy is going to go down too.
They did not raise, they did not raise taxes, they're doing like us, keeping taxes the same, if you all vote to do that, it's still not set in stone, you guys. Could vote to raise taxes if you wish, or lower if you wish, still. The same, they chose not to exceed and to give a, I believe it was 8% raise.
Barton Community College, I'll check with the president.
It was like B C C votes to not, I'm like, wait a second, but it was, I believe it's Barton, there was a.
B C C is.
I did.
No, there was.
Barton County's struggling.
I I haven't heard that they're giving an 8% raise, but I'll find out from Carl.
I know where Hutchinson was and Hutchinson's mill levy is a lot more than ours.
Yeah, let's move on so we can get done, let's give Tom some time to tell us about.
Okay, well, the the big moment y'all have been waiting for. So I'm going to share a couple of things here. First thing I'm going to share, as soon as I can figure this out. Before we actually look at the data, I do want to. Give it give an owner overview of kind of what what we're going to look at here, so this is some definitions and explanations. Of some of the data we're going to look at here in a second. So I'm going to focus here on the definitions and explanations component, so what we're going to see here in this report is the the tuition and fees rate that we. That we collect here at the college, this will be minus the institutional aid and the waivers. And then we will have a layer that we can look at that, we can add an additional layer that will show our state reimbursement. So we'll see both of those in this report. And then there's four layers of cost here, which you see here labeled 1, 2, 3, 4, so the first layer is going to be direct. Compensation for just teaching costs, and I believe that's salary plus overhead fringe of of benefits, et cetera. The second layer will add non payroll direct instructional expenses, so this would be anything that could contributed to that area such as cost. If there's equipment or anything in their department or divisional type budgets that hits that that layer. The third layer that we'll drill down or look at is the instructional plus release time, so level three adds all the. Release time that we use for a lot of the administrative work that has to happen in academics. And then level four is the full contribution margin, which is all the cost up to and including the dean's. In in the budget, so what you see here is the the tuition will be in blue and the costs will be in red. So I'm going to stop this and I'm going to get back into the actual B K D. Report here, so you can see, we're kind of still figuring this out, so bear with us if we don't have all the right answers for you today, but I think. This does help us tell a pretty good story. Here we go. So this this first view, can everybody see that, I can make.
Might need to magnify it a little bit.
Bit bigger here. You might want to look behind you, Dave, it might be easier. So this, what this shows us here is our first layer of all of our tuition and fees, which here is is blue and the cost. And this is without our state aid, this is direct, just tuition and fees and just our instructional cost level one, which was just faculty. So there's that that type of a view, and then we can also look here at the at the at the other view, which. Looks at the credits to tuition choice, cost choice, and then the the margin, so this is a 17.3% margin. Based upon straight just tuition and fees with no state aid. So if we add in state aid, and this is all of academics combined, you see the significant. Difference there in that margin, so that puts us at 59.5% for just direct teaching costs. For, again, this kind of shows that the the number and we can scroll down to see if you prefer that view. So what it shows here, then we generated in tuition and fees and state aid, this is, and this is F Y 21, we don't have F Y 22 yet. What you see there is 30,416 in tuition and 12,323 in cost. But as we then layer in those additional costs. So the teaching cost plus instructional, so if we start layering in these additional costs. Here you're going to see instructional cost. You know, that that's going to change when we add the instruction and release time. That'll add a little bit more to our our cost choice, and then when you look at the full contribution analysis, then we are at 50%. In in fiscal year 2021 for all of academics. And we can drill down a little bit more on this as well, so we can look at it by division. If we want to look at it by division, so this is the breakdown, and remember, this is the full contribution margin. So overall, it's 50%, but as we break this down by division, then we see how those different divisions impact that overall contribution.
And just so you're aware, the A S E division, that's Bill's division, they don't generate any really, any credit.
No, and and all that is our professional development courses, P D courses. And then we can even look down at the department level, so we can scroll through here, and so it breaks it out, so STEM breaking out by program. And we can drill down to basically show H S S, which is our Susan's Division.
What's that co op, Ed?
Co op is our co op course. And then, so these are all basically the the departments within those divisions. So as you can see, each area broken out. And then we get down to our back to A S E, so. I, you know, that's that's kind of the overall look of.
Education, I saw there, how do you guys divide that between Emporia State and and us? Education, I saw there, how do you guys divide that between Emporia State and, and us?
At this time.
Oh, okay. Perfect, thank you.
And then down below, then it has the breakout in a different, just a different table of that same data. And just shows that, that, that margin percentage on the right. So this is how our overall breaks down by department. So that's kind of this report in a nutshell. I don't know how much more you want to really dig into this. Kind, kinda, kinda. It's not a true cost comparison at the course level. That, that's what we've learned. So that's why, again, we're still kind of learning this tool. So I, I think at least, at least of course drilling down here to the department. And we can even drill down to the subject level if we want to get that, you know, math. We can get that detailed if we really want. But again, I think, I think, you know, in the big picture, I think the story. Shows here that again, overall, we're at a 50% contribution. For academics as a whole. I think that's a pretty, pretty safe number to be at.
And Tom and I have talked, we're not, we don't know necessarily how that compares to the other institutions, you know? We have to see if we can figure out, you know, what a comparison would be, but certainly shows. And it makes sense. I mean, obviously academic, academics is what generates the revenue. It's student tuition and fees. But it also shows that, you know, they, they're spending. You know, not, they're not spending every penny of tuition fees and state aid.
And this doesn't include tax, the additional tax revenue. It's from local taxes, right? This is just state aid and tuition and fees.
What was your biggest surprise in this?
I didn't have any myself.
No big.
No.
Does the cost component for this, Tom, does it include a depreciation cost for existing equipment or is it just new expenditures for FY21?
No, it's just straight. So if we, we can go back here, we can go back fiscal year as well. If we want to look at, you know, 2019, we're at a 51.1%. 2020, we are at. 50 and then now we're at 50, straight 50. And then if we average all those, then you know, overall we're 50.5. Yeah, this would not include any facilities. This is straight, just what's in the, in those departmental budgets. Up to the division level.
Because what, what basis number would you use? The 1964 basis number?
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
So it would be extremely difficult just because you've got so many different. Recesses using shared classroom, shared building. If I was thinking more from a hard equipment cost standpoint, I don't know that those numbers do the needle.
Yeah, plus we have so many different revenue sources that, you know, you factor in Perkins funding and, you know, there's, there's so many different ways that we fund that equipment. I would be kind of hard to, I think, really dial in that expense in comparison to how that costs the program. Any, any questions or you want me to drill down on any other parts of this?
He always came in. For, when I taught in the high school, it did.
Thanks. Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
No, no, I don't think so. Thank you for your time. I sent you an email. Few things that, you know, happened this past week. I will, I will, it hasn't been advertised very broadly, but there's a candidate for Wednesday night. That's sponsored by Farm Bureau and El Dorado Chamber at the Civic Center starts at. 5:30 and it's for the state house representatives from, from our area. And then also the folks that are running for city or county commission, sorry, county, yeah, county commission. I know, I don't have any idea who's going to be there, but. Farm Bureau and El Dorado Chamber are sponsoring it. And then I think they're doing, I think they're doing another one sometime. This is the first of their, it's this Wednesday night. Yeah.
And the farms too, cable.
Farm before was very nice. Yeah.
I did the one in white, yeah, in whitewater.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, it was really nice.
Kelly and I did.
We had, we had a good group of Butler representatives there and boy, the food was.
Oh my.
It was, it was phenomenal.
Yeah. Tia gave the college a really great shout out and recognized Kelly and her team and the culinary folks for all their hard work. And so it was a fun evening. Hot, but. And just so you're aware, I'm going to take a few days off, but I put that in my email. So Tom is in charge. But Jennifer's really the one that's in charge. So I left Jennifer. I left Jennifer in charge of Tom.
You've got the call.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Everybody. Happy birthday to Zeb.
Yes.
Yeah.